Good morning. Welcome to the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for October 3, 2016. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this great day in Haywood County. Please guide us today as we make decisions that will affect our citizens, watch over our young people, watch over our elderly, protect the ones who protect us here at home and abroad. In your name I'm in.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda this morning is an administrative agency report from Mountain Projects regarding the Real World Expo. We have with us Cy Simmons, Youth Case Manager from Mountain Projects. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Swanger. Appreciate the opportunity. I know many of you, and I'm a career educator out of Jackson County. In the last 10 years, I've had the pleasure of working real close with one of your fine programs at the Adult Learning Center in Collin-Fredford. We, I represent Raytech, which is the Region A Training and Education Consortium, and we have the WIOWA program. And that is a youth program, as you know, that helps kids overcome whatever barriers they have to accomplish their educational goals. And I commend you on such a fine program that you have. I've always respected Haywood County from a distance athletically, and me and Mr. Upton, and of course Kirk, and the great things you've done. But in the last 10 years, I really have had a great time modeling a Jackson County program after the great one you have here in Haywood County. So I appreciate that. What I'm here to tell you about this morning, you've got a long agenda, and I won't keep you very long. We run a Real World Expo each spring at Western Carolina University, and your students here in Haywood County are a big part of that. And what that expo does, in the mornings, our students, about 400 of them, hear from different experts in the field of insurance, banking, HR, finance, things like that. And then in the afternoon, we simulate the real world. Kids actually buy cars from Ken Wilson Ford, from Andy Shaw, they buy cell phones from Verizon, all within their budget. They secure places to live. So they, we try to simulate as closely we can the chaotic world that they're fixing to enter into. And we just, we wanted to make you aware of that. I've got a short video, and we want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to do these type of things for all of your students in Haywood County. Okay?
You ready for the video now?
I am.
Okay. If you could play that, please.
This morning. We've got a great day planned for you guys. I would encourage you to try to gain something from each one of your speakers. We've got three short speakers this morning. Just a short time ago, these people that you are meeting today, coming in contact with, were sitting right where you're sitting. And they, they dreamed the same dreams you're dreaming, and they put their dreams into action, and they're, they're living their dream right now. So I would encourage you to, to think big, and to dream, and to help these people, or let these people help you acquire some of those dreams that you have. So without further ado...
Following the lunch, the afternoon expo provided students with insights about what's involved with managing money after high school and college. Based on career assessments, students were given a budget worksheet showing their monthly salary and medical benefits based on education level. This helped determine their net monthly wages for budget purposes. Students took their budget worksheets to the main floor of the Ramsey Center, where vendors waited at tables to sell them everything from cars, to groceries, to cable television. They first had to factor in necessities, such as an apartment, clothing, food, and transportation. If they had any money left in their budget, they could then shop for non-essentials, such as computers, concert tickets, tattoos, luxury sound systems, et cetera. There was also a Life Happens table that provided some unexpected turns of events, such as medical emergencies, car repairs, or other situations that would require expenses they had not budgeted for. Trooper Rico Stevens of the North Carolina Highway Patrol showed the students how disobeying the traffic laws of North Carolina can land you in a real world of trouble. It was an eye-opening experience for the students.
You get called for a speeding ticket if it's over 75 miles per hour and it's not reduced. You can kiss your license goodbye for 30 days up to six months to a year. And then in your car driving, someone like Trooper Stevens will write to you for a driving while license revoked. You get a couple of those, and you'll never get your driver's license back. So even a small thing as a speeding ticket...
What do y'all think of the Real World Expo?
It's fun.
Are y'all glad you came?
Yeah, for sure. Glad I came.
Good experience?
Yeah.
Expo here, would you think this would be beneficial for other students to come?
It's one to do, and let them know what they're gonna, you know, spend their money on. Yeah. Kids out there are gonna be spending money on candy, and video games, and like cooler stuff. But you gotta think about it, you know? You have to pay for your car payments, your houses, your, you know, gas, anything, you know, clothes, shoes.
So everything costs. You gotta think about what you spend.
Yeah, you know, not like the crap that you're gonna buy, like candy and video games. You gotta think about real stuff, like electrical, water, and all that.
To, to bring it all together, the kids arrive at Western Carolina that day, and they think they can afford a 2016 F-150, but they end up buying a Ford Pinto and sharing, sharing that with friends. But I do, I do appreciate the opportunity, and we may be back in the, in the spring of the year and update you a little bit more on, on what's fixing to come. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have any questions, Cy?
No questions, but you know, I am the, involved with Southwestern Commission Workforce Development Board, and so I've been very aware and very involved with what they're doing up there. And I want to commend you all for, for taking the time and effort and help train our children for the real world, because sometimes that doesn't really happen. They get out there, and some of these children are, they don't have the parent's support to help them learn and get through this stuff, and they're just dumped out there and have to kind of get it on their own. So I really commend you all about that. And then, this is also a part of the, our Alternative Learning Center that we work very diligently on to be sure that it stayed whole this year. And a very important program for our area and the region, and so thank you for what you do.
Thanks. Okay. We'll move to the public comment session. I've had two people sign up to speak, both on the same topic, I believe. First is Jane Webb. Is she not present?
She's here, but she would rather I went first. We're here together.
Oh, okay. Well, that's fine. That's fine.
You know that my name's Ellen Pitt. I'm here as the grandmother of an endangered child, not with MADD today, not in that role. Sober, credible grandparents are often the first responders when a child is in danger due to neglect, drug use, physical, sexual, or emotional assault, or dangerous criminal conduct that's occurring in their home by the parents or their associates. Grandparents have no rights to intervene, and when they report to the agency that's supposed to investigate, the child is sometimes isolated from the grandparent as a method of retaliation by the parents. This places the child in more danger than ever. Grandchildren are often used as pawns, and have literally held hostage to force and intimidate grandparents to give money or not to make reports. The role of the sober, credible grandparent is seized by a large impersonal government agency that claims itself to have paltry resources, inadequate staff, and some of whose workers themselves have been charged with crimes. The agency operates under a veil of secrecy that seems to be inconsistently applied. By some reports, and certainly by my own experience, they engage in retaliatory and vindictive conduct. When grandparents are excluded from the family, yet another fracture is created for the family to overcome. The role, the opinions, and the recommendations of a sober, credible grandparent should and must take priority over the opinions and recommendations of a paid temporary worker acting in the role of a jurist. Grandparents are familiar with the intimate dynamics of the family. Their relationship with grandchildren should never be discounted or unacknowledged. They should have the legal right to establish, maintain, and nourish those relationships without interference from paid strangers who offer no credentials. In fact, the grandparents should have access to the background education and criminal history of the workers assigned to any case involving their grandchild, and access to any previous complaints that have been filed against the agency itself or the worker assigned to their grandchild. We are seeking a North Carolina Grandparents' Bill of Rights. Bills were introduced in 2011 and in 2015, which spoke only to visitation and were defeated. We're seeking something quite different. There is no consistency across the United States with regard to grandparents' rights, although thousands of grandparents are raising grandchildren and even great-grandchildren. Be assured that if the child's parents are sober, and the child's needs are being met, and the child is not in danger, we rejoice. We don't want anything to do with that. But due to the ever-growing opioid epidemic, more and more children are in need of at least temporary care. Many of them have loving grandparents who are being denied the opportunity to rescue them. We intend to seek common sense legislation to address these matters, and also to establish a community committee of grandparents who are not related to, involved with, employed by, or in any other way depend on any government agency, that will receive, screen, review, and render to the appropriate authorities concerns that are related to the conduct of agencies that seem to be accountable to no one other than by lawsuit. We ask, as we go along in this endeavor, that you support the grandparents of North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you. When I saw the topic that was going to be addressed by you and Ms. Webb, I pulled the 2015 bill that apparently was defeated. Is that correct, Ira?
Correct.
Don't know why. It seemed pretty straightforward. Gave a judge the authorities to... But in any event, it, it was. So I don't, I don't know where this matter stands now in the General Assembly. Is there, do you know if there's any pending bills or legislation?
No, when they start the new session, I don't know if someone is planning to reintroduce it.
All right. Okay, Jane Webb.
Good morning. My name is Jane Webb. My beautiful grandson was brutally murdered here in Haywood County on January 31 of this year. Had my rights as a grandmother, or had my daughter's rights as a mother, because she still had custody of Coller, had been honored or considered, I would be home right now rocking my 17-month-old grandchild instead of here today. DSS acted in a role that they had custody, refusing Felicia of her child, and at the same time refusing to aid with visits, which may have prevented his death if he had not been isolated, isolated with no one checking on him. At the time of his death, Coller's parents were incarcerated. Although I was Coller's nearest blood relative, and although the kinship placement with me was signed on January 27, four days before he was murdered, I was never notified that he had been found unresponsive. Sorry.
It's okay.
I was not notified by any social workers that he had even been taken to the hospital, to the morgue, or that his body had already been took for an autopsy, because grandparents don't have rights. Therefore depriving me of any opportunity to see him, hold him, say goodbye to him, as I was the only family member that could have been there for him. So I ask y'all to please support the Grandparents' Bill of Rights, and to protect our future, our children here in Haywood County. DSS has been known to misuse their power sometimes, and has, this has resulted in the death of my baby. I had his two siblings, and have had them since birth, that could have easily placed him in my care at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. We're very sorry for your loss. Ira, would you mind checking and see with our legislative delegation whether there's any movement, or whether this is being considered for legislation, or anything of that nature, and let the board know?
Yes, I'd be, I'd be glad to.
Yeah, and just for informational purposes, could we possibly get ahold of the legislation that was tried?
Yeah. Yeah, I've got, I pulled that, Ira pulled it just this morning when I found out, said it's a one-page...
If we could get ahold of that, so we'd be...
So we'll get each commissioner a copy of that as well.
I will.
Maybe, Ira, look at some of the, the debate that took place when the bill was, was being voted on, and maybe get an idea of what the rationale behind not approving it was. The legislative intent.
Some sort of summary of what, why, what, and where.
I can try to get a copy of it. Sometimes you can get transcripts of committee discussions. I'll try. If I can get a copy of the bill from Ira, I'll see if there's some record down there. If, if not a record of committee discussions, maybe a bill summary from staff that might be helpful.
Okay. Well, you know that terrain, so any help you...
I'm not familiar with the bill, but if I can get that bill from Ira, that's what I'll, that's what I'll try to do.
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's time to do, for the, our state commissioner committees to do recommendations on legislation, you know? We as a county need to turn our priorities in, and this might be a good chance.
It'd be a very good chance to, to contact them and see if, if they were involved in 2015.
Get their, get their opinion on that also. Yeah.
Because we'll get a chance to look at it and vet it, and see if it makes our list and recommend it.
Exactly.
Okay. I'll go ahead and get that together for you then.
Okay. Thank you.
Were we commenting on that, or should we comment? I, I just wanted to make a comment or two. I certainly feel for Ms. Webb and, and her loss, but what I also wanted to point out is it's longstanding case law and, and statutory law about grandparents' rights. And, and the courts have to uphold that law. And until that law is changed, that's what they're bound to do. The Department of Social Services has to carry out that, that state law as well, and so do the judges. And, and so, the department does the best job I believe that they can do. And there, if, if they don't do a good job, then there's ways to investigate that as well. But what I just wanted to do is just kind of qualm the fact that some statements made about the Department of Social Services, because that is an extremely difficult job. Anytime you're dealing with people's children, parents, and grandparents, the emotional aspect of that is very difficult. And like in everything, there, there may be some decisions that aren't the best decisions, but I think that they're making the most informed decisions that they can. And, you know, unfortunately, sometimes bad things happen. And, but until that time, until any kind of state law is changed, and I'm not necessarily saying it's, it should be changed, because the primary rights should be with the parents. But until it is, I don't think the department has a choice but to do some of the things that they do.
They have no choice but to obey the law. So, okay. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move to constituent concerns. Bill?
I have none.
I don't have any.
No.
Any adjustment to the agenda today? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. We've had the opportunity to review the September 19, 2016 regular meeting minutes. Are there changes to those? If not, we'll move to item two, approval of an application to the Public School Building Capital Fund for lottery proceeds to pay for the current year debt service of $197,412.50 for Pisgah High School renovation project. Ira?
Yes, this is a, an annual thing that will come up as long as the debt service is there. It's for that classroom, the additional classrooms that were done at Pisgah. And once we approve this application, once, if you approve this application, it'll go to the state, and we'll get the, the monies, the $197,412 to pay that debt service.
Okay. We've been dealing with this for several years now.
Yes, a number of years, and will a number of years into the future, so...
Exactly. Okay, we have a, any questions there? If not, we'll move to the third item, which is another budget amendment from Health and Human Services, $50,000 from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, a grant. Ira?
Yes, this is a budget amendment to include this grant. It'll wind up being passed through monies to JCPC, and then on to support this particular program.
Okay, questions there? If not, then we'll move to the fourth item. Ira?
Yes, the Haywood County School System Chairman Chuck Francis sent a letter to us, and the matter's been in the newspaper recently. They are forming a committee primarily of persons, it appears, in the school system to review teacher compensation, specifically the supplement compensation, and add, they have asked that a commissioner, for a commissioner appointment and input.
Yeah, yeah, I spoke with Chuck Francis, and he, and it was widely reported in the Mountain Ear, their article, I think laid out pretty clearly what the issue was. He asked if we could have a commissioner attend, and so that's the reason for the discussion today. Kirk and I are on the education committee representing the board, but as you know, I'm leaving the board, and will not be available for that. And I think this is, is a, it's an important conversation to have, because it, you know, I think it needs, it needs to be drilled down with good data to support any, any recommendation that the commissioners would make, because the dollar amounts we're talking about are, would necessitate very clearly a substantial tax increase, I think. You're looking at three or four million dollars each year. So I think this needs to be a data-driven decision. And I think, I would hope that we would use the talents of our county manager, who has done a lot of research on salaries and competitive compensation on behalf of county employees. And I think a lot of that data would be very useful in this discussion as well. So Kirk, you're on that committee.
Yeah, I mean, since I've been on the committee for, for quite some time, I mean, I'd be happy to serve in that capacity. What I would like, some guidance from the board, though, is this, is this something that, that is in addition to the funding formula? Is this something that we should, and make part of the funding formula?
As was presented to me and Ira, it would be in addition to the funding formula from the school system's point of view. But I think this committee could fashion that ultimately however they so chose. Because it's going to have to, any additional funding is going to have to be approved by the county commissioners. So, now, again, I was, I was on that committee, and I would have served with Kirk. Is there anyone who would like to take my place?
I have interest.
Okay. All right. Kirk, is that all right with you?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, so that'll give us some additional flexibility. And Ira, you would be available as a resource?
Yes, I'd be happy to do any research.
Okay.
And, and any questions, I'd be happy to do whatever is needed to support the commissioners in the education system.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to, you know, basically, your, your, your teacher salaries, they're, they're pretty well set by the state level, and in the county on their local ones, they, they pretty well match those in, in how they're funded and all. But I think what we're talking about is a lot about the teacher supplements, and, and you know, because when I was on the school board, you know, we kind of faced this same issue, and, you know, we worked really hard to try to get the supplement up. But at that time, you know, you had ADM money coming in, you had lottery money coming in, it hadn't been surplanted, you didn't have declining enrollment like you have now. And now you've got an area, and we're going to reference Buncombe County, because they are under a huge growth going on over there. They've got a huge, you know, increase in students, they've got an increase in housing, you know, and, and they're driving this, because they, they've, and this is exactly what we faced before. So, you know, there's a lot of factors there that's got to be looked at, because, you know, you go, you do find it, or if you do, then they just go up again on you. So I think that it needs to be really looked at real diligently, and, you know, we got issues now that, that we were not facing, or we, you know, different, different, different criteria that we're having to look at now, so, okay.
Kevin, you ready? Okay.
One comment. I, I saw the monthly report. We're 40 students down this year from last. Fun inform looks like that will probably be, the amount will be stable for the school system going 40 students down, so that, and then, I think another fact we're going to have to look at is budget cuts, the deep budget cuts that were made, can any of those be looked at and brought back to the original total? It's really going to be complicated, and do we need to pull out the supplement as a separate item from the regular budget?
I think all those things have to be looked at and analyzed.
And I know we're going to look at this too, but you know, you've got several counties surrounding Buncombe, and you know, and we, you need to know exactly what they're, what they're trying to do, and how they're rating, and where we rate is where we are. You know, I think you just got a lot of, a lot of issues there, it's got to be really dug down, drilled down into.
And we have to have a very clear understanding as well of, as the degree of public support that exists, and public understanding that exists. So, you know, it'll, it'll be a job, I think, but, but we've certainly got the competence to accomplish it. Okay, if you would, Ira, send a letter to the school system advising them that Commissioners Kirkpatrick and Upton will represent our board in those discussions, and that you are... and your staff are available and will be involved in collecting data and research.
Okay.
Okay. Any objections to that? Okay. Okay, any observations or questions on the consent agenda? If not, would entertain a motion that the consent agenda as presented be approved? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Who made the motion?
He made the motion.
Okay, good. All right. Okay, we'll move to old business. We'll deal first with the approval of an interlocal agreement with the Town of Canton for infrastructure and economic development for West Carolina Freightliner, Western Star. Ira?
Yes. As has been discussed, and we had the public hearing prior without comment, this is for the interlocal cooperation agreement with the Town of Canton. We're working with the Town of Canton, because they're the ones who would have the authority that's within their jurisdiction and also over the roads. And what we're planning to do in this interlocal agreement is provide funding for a street, for expansion and repairs to a street, so that Freightliner can operate the kind of Western Carolina, Western Star Freightliner can operate the kind of business at that site. Under this agreement, the Town of Canton will then turn around and make an agreement with two entities, the one who owns the land, which is TW West, and with Western Carolina They'll make a contract with them to carry out and work through the rest of it and the repairs, and they'll also be providing funding for the road repairs. It's expected that out of the gate, there will be at least 25 jobs and a million dollars worth of capital expansion to the site. The job count is anticipated. They're going to add a second shift, we were advised, and the job count is anticipated to rise as high as 60 jobs over the next few years after they get this completed. But we know, the 60 is not required, but we know out of the gate, there's 25 and 37 referenced in this document as benchmarks. Anticipate return on investment, and this is something that you have to be advised of and aware of when we do this. We anticipate that, based on sales tax and property tax, five to seven years, return on investment, and all that money will come back at the outside. There'll be significant sales tax coming in, and because of gauging the new sales tax on services, which would apply, it's not having had that on a business like this at this scale, that's a little bit of the X-factor in there. But we anticipate a very reasonable return on investment to get all the taxpayer dollars back in and the jobs, and put that particular site to use. The agreement is in the packet. Are there any questions about the agreement?
I've had no comments at all about this. Has any other board member had any? As we've moved through the process, I have received favorable comments, but nothing since the public hearing. So there's no questions of Ira or no further comments?
I'd make a comment, you know, I've been by there a couple of times. It looks like there's equipment out there getting ready to start, so a piece of property that's been in quite need of repair is going to be very...
Been vacant for a while.
It's going to look like something.
Comments? If not, then would entertain a motion that the interlocal agreement as presented with the Town of Canton be approved?
Some move. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, Ira, move to the budget amendment to pay for this.
Yes, and that's exactly what it is, the budget amendment to pay for this.
I would entertain a motion that a budget amendment to fund, in the amount of $200,000, to fund the interlocal agreement with the Town of Canton, as we've previously approved, be also approved. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. That's unanimous, thank you. And we now move to Judy Hickman for requesting approval of the 2017 Schedule of Values.
Good morning.
Good morning.
North Carolina General Statute 105317 requires the approval of the Schedule of Values that are to be used during the reappraisal of all properties. During the September 6 regular meeting, these schedules were presented to the board, and a PowerPoint was given by Mr. Francis regarding the 2017 revaluation. There was also a call for a public hearing, which was held on September 19. And after the 19th, we are requesting the approval of the 2017 Schedule of Values.
Have you had any public feedback or questions about it?
We have not had any comments, other than what was at the public hearing. And of course, we did have one question, which was regarding the manufactured homes.
Right.
And the schedule is different from the manufactured homes as compared to a dwelling.
Are there... The only question I've been asked is what significant changes are there from past years? Are there any real significant changes?
We have Ron McCarthy here with us, who could probably answer to that.
The one significant change was an increase in the base rate for a single-family home. We also increased the land use value for woodland, $5 per acre.
I'm sorry.
Forestry was increased $5 per acre, based on the state's recommendations.
State does the soils examination and all of that, and come to that conclusion, as I understand it?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
The new... We kind of went over that the last time, but that housing is based, or the increase that you're talking about, from, I think it was $89 and change to $94 and change. That's for a average home, new home today. And basically, that change was based on building material inflation for the last four years or five or six years since we've done this thing, and that's what drove that right there.
Yes, sir.
And that's when you're looking across the board, and our region, and how much building materials, and that's what people can pretty much figure, that if they go out and build an average home, an average home, that's what it's going to be.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions?
Most... The other thing, I guess, in most of this stuff that you all use, it comes out from the Department of Revenue and their figures, correct?
The forestry comes from the Department... The land use comes from the Department of Revenue.
But it's still state top. The information comes down.
Well, the information on the wages, per-hour wages and things of that nature. The rest, we try to gather locally.
From locally?
Yes.
And the Schedule of Values is instrumental in determining value, but that's the most instrumental part of the value is the marketplace.
Yes, sir.
What land and homes are selling for in arms-length transactions. Okay. Okay, any other questions, comments? If not, would entertain a motion that the 2017 Schedule of Values as presented be approved?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Judy. Ron? Okay, we'll move to new business. We have our Tax Collections Office update on plan for delinquent collections. I ask the county manager to prepare some comments and questions that would hopefully put us in a position to be... Enter into a dialogue that would have some meaning, because we have some numbers and so forth that the public would find it useful as well, I think. So I'll let Ira and Mike just start discussing this, and any commissioner that has a question, just chime in.
Did you want to start, do you have some comments to start with?
I know Ira's got a list of questions. I was going to kind of give you an idea of what our plan is and what we're doing. Right now, you know, our goal is to work out some sort of arrangements, whoever we can, on delinquent taxes and that sort of thing. And by doing that, we, you know, we do a lot of payment plans, a lot of ACHs, where the payments just come out automatically and that sort of thing. And we also do our attachments, where we attach the bank account for delinquent accounts. Usually, you know, 2015 or older is what we're doing right now. Then we work with the levies, with the Sheriff's Department. They've been doing a great job for us. Morgan does that, or works with us on there. Garnishments, honestly, we haven't done a whole lot of garnishments, and that was one of the things, once we started talking about this, I realized there was kind of the room for, you know, the biggest room for improvement there. So that's something, after we, you know, are working on this round of attachments right now, and whatever banks we can't find on those type people, then we're going to hit them with the garnishments. So that's our plan from there. And then Tracy and Mark Pinkson's office does a great job for us on foreclosure, so we're still going to continue to push those.
What does ACH mean?
Just...
What does that stand for?
Just automatic draft out of your checking account every month. And basically, what we'll do, like, people that are behind, we can set them up on ACH to catch them up. And then one of the things we're also trying to do now is to keep people going, like, you know, instead of having to pay your taxes at the end of the year, even for the current ones, we try to give them an average of what it's going to be monthly, and let them pull it out each month. And that's just money that we automatically have coming in, and it helps a lot of people with, you know, it's easier to pay $500 or $50 a month as opposed to, you know...
Okay. But what does ACH stand for? What is that?
Automatic check.
That's the term I use.
Yeah, automatic check.
Oh, automatic check.
I don't know what the actual, but it's automatic check, something.
Yeah, I don't know what it is, but that's what it is.
Yeah.
I noticed that the delinquent tax rate collection for fiscal year ending June 15, or June 30, 2015, was 40%. How does Haywood... How does that number compare with other counties in the region or the state? Do we know?
Honestly, with other counties, I have... I'm not sure.
I don't know. Could I be characterized?
There'd be something to look into.
Is that a good rate, a fair rate, an awful rate?
And then we fell down to 29% at the end of 2016, 40. So what... Why... Why the difference?
The only thing I can attest to, maybe it... One, I mean, there were some places that we've got room for improvement in. And one, that'd be in the garnishments, that sort of thing. Attachments are a little bit down, something we're working on. We've got a really new staff, but they're doing a great job, getting caught up and learning and that sort of thing. You know, we've been rolling a little bit less into the delinquents, so I don't know if that has anything to do with it, but...
The... I don't know what the program is now, but when you have a tax refund coming from the state, that can be attached if there's delinquent property taxes, can it not?
Correct. That's set off.
That's set off, yeah, thank you. Are we fully utilizing that?
As far as going after tax returns for people? No, we're not. And honestly, I... This is not something I was even aware... I mean, I know we've talked about it, but it's not something that we've ever... That's something I need to get with our own, get some training on, and figure out how to go ahead and start attaching.
Do you have objections to that, or?
No, no.
It's not been used?
Not at all.
Okay, well, we need to get a procedure, I would think, then, to, you know...
Has it been done before?
Yeah.
Okay, so then all of a sudden, we're not doing it now?
Yeah, there's several things that would mean they just weren't... You know, the garnishments were something, was one of them. That is obviously one of them. And I'll get with Ira, and maybe we can get with David on that, because I'm sure he was the one that was doing it before, so.
We can definitely work on that.
Yeah.
For training, I mean, I have a problem with arranging training on that.
Whoever is conversant in that, and the mechanics of it, and the procedures, we need to get that going. I don't know how many thousands of dollars we could collect, but any collection is...
Oh, yeah, it doesn't matter what it is, it's...
Yeah.
The state has an office that handles that, and they probably would be the most appropriate to train. I know that we can assist in finding who that is, so that they can work with the state to learn, because you have to register with them as well to work that.
Because we saw with the garnishments, I think, that the available funds were greater than had been anticipated.
I'm sorry?
The garnishments demonstrated that the funding, the funds available for collection were greater than we had anticipated. So I think, what, about 140?
Yeah, somewhere around.
Something like that, more?
Yeah, somewhere around there.
So we need to follow up on both of those. And any other comments, Ira?
Well, we have the... In the report, we had broken out some of the numbers, and just simply to show that, the collection rate, you jumped right to the big numbers for the collection rate, which would not be dependent on how much money is owed. The collection rate is the collection rate on what is there. So it's not... For example, if you start with a lower figure of delinquent taxes at the beginning of a fiscal year, your collection rate will be charged on how much of that lower figure you collect. So I don't know. The things that we are looking at in the amounts of money on the garnishments, as you pointed out, it was significantly lower, over $100,000 lower. The attachments, I believe, also the same in the period. So we'll be... You know, the numbers are available in the report, and I did break it down in a question-answer format on these different numbers. We could... I mean, if you want to look at the numbers a little bit here, for example, during the... And we're just talking about, when we're talking about these numbers, the Tax Collector's Office collects a lot of things. They collect fire tax and occupancy tax. We're not talking about those numbers. What we're just talking about is what's owed to the county that we would have based our county budget on. And what we're talking about is, for example, how much was collected through active enforcement action in the fiscal year ending June 30, 2015?
$1,097,000.
Okay. And we talked about garnishment being down, we talked about attachment being a little down, and that was in a 40% collection rate year, right?
Yes.
And how much was collected through active enforcement in June 30, 2016? Okay. And that was with the 29% rate?
Mm-hmm.
So that was... Those differences relate a lot, because we're starting with close numbers, those differences relate a lot to collection rate. But I think that's what this plan is to attack.
Right, absolutely. I mean, honestly, I mean, there's a big gap in the garnishments, and I just didn't realize. The reports that we ran to get this are not something that we have access to, that we just rerun. We actually had to call and get this kind of report created for us, it was kind of difficult to... We haven't ran one before. But that, I mean, by looking at this from the questions that came up, I mean, there is a big gap that we can make up there in those, especially in those different, those areas, the enforcements and that sort of thing.
Well, it's in all of our interests that the collection rate be as good as it can be. And it's in the interest of the Haywood County taxpayers, who are making their tax payments, that delinquent payments be made or collected as well. And I know there's a degree of inexperience in your office.
Well, I mean, there's definitely areas that we can improve on.
Yeah. So as I say, it's in our interest to work together, and I know you're a public official, but, you know, we stand ready to help in any way that we can, you know, for the tools you may need or whatever. So work with Ira, and he will report to us, you know, about what you need and how we're progressing, because we don't want to get this whole dug too deep.
Right. I mean, I don't think that's an issue that we're having, is getting into it. I mean, because, I mean, if you go back and look at it, what we're actually, each year when we start off with what's going in, that are delinquents, as far as what's going in and what's there, I mean, each year, we're dropping in that aspect of it, and that helps with, you know, the current collections that we're doing. So, but there is improvement. I mean, there's a lot of room that we can do. I mean, there's a lot of money left on the table that we can go after.
The ongoing taxes, because we're talking about delinquent, you have delinquent, and then you have the current year. The current year collection rate is higher. The total amount of delinquents actually rose slightly between those two fiscal years, the last two.
Right, but I'm saying, it's growing, but I'm sorry, the amount that we're putting in each year is a little bit less.
Okay.
Because the ongoing taxes are going up.
Any commissioners have any comments?
I just, you know, would like to know where that, you know, at the end of 2015, at 40%, where we stand with surrounding counties, you know, and then if... Why aren't we using what we need to use to collect these taxes? Because it's not fair to the people that's paying.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I just know garnishes... Garnishments are down 80%, I mean, 80%. I mean...
Yeah, I mean, the garnishments are definitely down. It was something, I mean, looking at until actually seeing those reports, from what I... I mean, I didn't see that garnishments, because they're just the amount that we get, but I guess when you add so many of them together, and then those amounts, it comes, I mean, it's definitely something we're missing the boat on.
Kirk or Bill, you have any... Any questions? Kirk or Bill, you want to say, any questions? Ira, hands. Michael?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, well, we will, we'll see you next month, thank you.
I'll figure out what the, the other counties are, are trying to-
Okay, all right, great. Okay, second item of new business is requesting approval of secondary road right-of-way agreement with DOT on Beaver Dam Road to work on a safety project to allow greater site distance and construct a shoulder along the road at no cost to the county. Chris Boyd.
Good morning. NC DOT has requested a twenty-five foot right-of-way from center line of Beaver Dam Road along a piece of property we own at the industrial park. I think we know it as the Reno property. The distance they've requested is just under five hundred feet. They propose to do a spot safety project, which is to cut the bank back a little bit, put a shoulder on the road where there is no shoulder, make a ditch area. Some of you may remember, a couple of years ago, this project came up to the board for approval and it was federal funding. Federal funding only required a, a right-of-way encroachment agreement, did not require an actual right-of-way. That federal money did not come through, so the project was not done. Now the DOT proposes to use state funds. State funds require an actual right-of-way, so that, that's why this is back in, in front of the board again. I've talked with Ira about this, Chip's reviewed the contracts, David Francis has looked at it, Mark Klasby's looked at it, you know, at this point, we see no particular issue with donating this right-of-way for a spot safety project.
Yeah.
Some of you may be familiar with that curve there.
Yeah, I am, and there is a, a lack of site distance there.
Yes, there is.
So it is a safety issue.
That is close right there to the entrance of the industrial park.
It's just beyond, just beyond the-
But with us having that side out there, this was kind of an issue that, that come up about additional, you know, potential additional traffic, and if we do have that, this, this helps remedy that.
Yes, it would.
That's right.
And if you, if you go and turn, you can see right off, when you turn into the industrial park, you can see what, you can see what, what, what we're talking about, that it needs to be widened.
I think it's very worthwhile and it's no cost to the county and it improves, enhances safety and enhances the viability, I think, of the industrial park.
So, in addition to the twenty-five foot right-of-way, they're asking for a temporary construction easement to be able to grade that slope out of one-to-one from the top side. That, that temporary easement varies from a distance of ten feet to about thirty-three feet.
Okay, so obviously you're recommending it?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or observations? If not, then we'd entertain a motion that the secondary road right-of-way agreement with North Carolina Department of Transportation on Beaver Dam Road, as described, be approved.
So move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Chris. Okay, the third item is requesting approval of appointments to the Community Child Protection Team and the Child Fatality Prevention Team. Stoney? I want to break this up a little bit and have the, the last three individuals as one motion, and I know Kevin will not participate in the vote of his, because of his wife, okay?
Good morning, Commissioners. We have two state-appointed review teams that function out of the Health and Human Services Agency. One, on the public health side, it's a child fatality prevention team, and we review every child death in the county regardless of the cause of death, looking for causal factors, looking really at systems issues, things we might could do as a community to change that would make children safer. On the social services side of our business, we have a Community Child Protection Team that meets to review child abuse and neglect cases for much of those same reasons, to see if there are causal factors, if we're seeing the same factors over and over, that we might be able to implement some systemic changes to make kids safer in our county. One of the things we see is that these two teams have a tremendous amount of overlap and as a consolidated agency, we want to move toward a model where we can have these teams meet together and look at this whole issue. To do that, we need to adjust our membership a little bit, because the two teams are not identical, but with just a few changes, we can almost get them identical, allow us to meet at the same time and work together on joint issues. So, we are bringing several changes and, see, we put that in two?
Yeah.
Okay, one would be to replace Chief Hollingshead with Chief Whitner, and we have talked to them, Whitner, and they are both willing to do that. Chief Hollingshead, due to his schedules, having a hard time making these meetings, and so he's perfectly fine with Chief Whitner taking over both teams. We also want to add Gayla Jones to the teams, who is our Social Work Program Manager, so she would serve on both teams and can serve as an appointee of the County Commission. And, am I missing one? Oh, we want to add Kristy Yazan, who is on one team, but we also, she is a Developmental Services Agency Child Development Specialist, we want her to be on both teams. And so that would be my first request, is to appoint these three members.
Okay. If there's no objection, we'd entertain a motion that Kristy, is it Yazan?
Yazan.
Chief Whitner and Gayla Jones be appointed to the Community Child Protection Team.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Also, Ms. Alice Ensley serves on the Community Child Fatality Team, but we think it would make our protection team stronger as well if she were able to serve on both those teams, so we would like to ask that she be appointed to the Community Child Protection Team.
Okay, and again, we broke that up because Alice Ensley is the, the wife of Commissioner Kevin Ensley, and that would be a, a conflict, so we'd entertain that motion at this point.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. And let the record reflect that Commissioner Ensley was conflicted and did not vote. Okay, anything else on the new, on new business? That concludes our agenda items. At this point, would entertain a motion to enter into closed session for Attorney Client Privilege, one forty-three, three-one-eight-point-one-one-A-three. Personnel, one forty-three, three-one-eight-point-one-one-A-six. And closed session minutes, one forty-three, three-one-eight-point-one-one-A-one.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, we're in closed session. We have returned from closed session, we have two matters to address. First is a, entertain a motion to appoint Judy Hickman to the unexpired term of the Haywood County Tax Assessor, the term which expires June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Do I hear that motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, thank you, congratulations Judy. You will be sworn in later today, is my understanding, so, again, congratulations. All right, the second item of business is a rather lengthy list of closed session minutes and various actions for those minutes. First, I would entertain a motion to approve and, and release closed session minutes in the following categories. Closed session, one forty-three, three-one-eight-point-one-one-A-one, June sixth, two thousand sixteen, and September sixth, two thousand sixteen. Second category would be economic development, one forty-three, three-one-eight-point-one-one-A-four, dated June twentieth, two thousand sixteen, and July eighteenth, two thousand sixteen. Entertain that motion.
So move.
Second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Next, I would entertain a motion to release, release closed session minutes approved at previous meetings under the following categories. Attorney client privilege, one forty-three, three-one-eight-point-one-one-A-three, the dates of November eighth, two thousand eight, June seventh, two thousand ten, October eighteenth, two thousand ten, November fifteenth, two thousand ten, June twentieth, two thousand eleven, December nineteenth, two thousand eleven, February seventeen, two thousand fourteen, May nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, March second, two thousand fifteen, June first, two thousand fifteen, and March twenty-first, two thousand sixteen. Next category would be personnel, one forty-three, three-one-eight-point-one-one-A-six, December seventh, two thousand nine, March eighteenth, two thousand thirteen. The next category would be economic development, one forty-three, three-one-eight-point-one-one-A-four, dated August nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, March seventeen, two thousand fourteen, November second, two thousand fifteen, November sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, March first, two thousand sixteen, March seventh, two thousand sixteen. The next category would be acquisition of real property, one forty-three, three-one-eight-point-one-one-A-five, dated November seventeenth, two thousand fourteen. So that motion would be to release closed session minutes approved at previous meetings. Entertain that motion.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. Next would be a motion to approve but not yet release closed session minutes, and they would be subject to review at a later date on the following categories. Economic development, one forty-three, three-one-eight-point-one-one-A-four, dated June twentieth, two thousand sixteen, July eighteen, two thousand sixteen, and a second set on July eighteen, two thousand sixteen. The next category would be attorney-client privilege, one forty-three, three-one-eight-point-one-one-A-three, the dates being June twentieth, two thousand sixteen, August fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, and July eighteenth, two thousand sixteen. So we'd entertain that motion, and again, it's to approve but not yet release.
I'll move.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, and finally, the next category would be a motion to approve but not release closed session minutes at any time. First category is attorney-client privilege, one forty-three, three-one-eight-point-one-one-A-three, dated June sixth, two thousand sixteen, second date of June sixth, two thousand sixteen, June twentieth, two thousand sixteen, and two sets of minutes on July eighteenth, two thousand sixteen. Following category would be personnel, one forty-three, three-one-eight-point-one-one-A-six, June sixth, two thousand sixteen, June twentieth, two thousand sixteen, August fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, and August fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. Again, this is a motion to approve but not release.
So move.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, that concludes that item of business. Is there any other business for the board? Hearing none, would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you.